Okay, we're gonna go to the meeting in two hours. This is Cross, if you call the roll, please.
Sure, Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Grassi, here. Tom Heak.
Here.
Lori Korniski.
Here.
Jeff Miley.
Here.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the appointment of Belinda Grassi today as a time treasurer, can be time pro tempore, if I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck, can you call the roll, please?
Oh, sorry.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye, whatever. Sorry, like, whatever, Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, on behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members of today's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone, this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held for the purpose, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business as not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First, we'll make a motion to approve the June 29, 2021 Board Minutes and the July 6, 2021 Special Meeting Minutes, if I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that brings us to old business, if anyone has anything. Okay, how about new business?
I just have Capitol Conference registration stuff, I don't know if anybody's going, which I think registration opened in last week.
What the dates of that this year? The usual, I'm sure.
No, it's actually a week later, November 7.
That's the usual.
Yeah, last year was a week later, I think, November 7 through the 9.
Yeah, it's always a good thing, so it's Kyle's birthday week, at least. And yours?
No, not yet.
Well, usually right around that time. So for new business, the only thing I wanted to bring up was, I really struggle with it. Tuesday nights have always been difficult for me, but they've become downright impossible in my life right now to get to board meetings. I didn't know if there is potential to, if people would be willing to look at moving us out of Tuesday nights to even like Thursday nights, or switching in some mornings, but between my husband's travel schedule and my kids' schedule right now, I have so much on Tuesday nights, it's becoming extremely difficult for me to make it work without really making everyone else's lives around me difficult.
I would say, for me, Thursdays would be better, but I could potentially do Mondays as well.
I can do any night. Doesn't matter to me.
Lori or Jack, do you have an issue with Thursday nights?
I don't.
I do not.
Jim?
No, not probably until the whole baseball season's Friday nights.
I don't think anyone has one of their board meetings on Friday nights. That sounds crazy.
You're just talking through the rest of this year, right?
Yeah, until we'd like reset meetings for next year, but I know we've been Tuesdays forever, and so I'm not trying to totally rock the boat, but I also don't want to be the person that's completely changing, trying to change things every single month on everybody.
No, I mean, things change, so we have to adjust.
Yeah, like I said, Tuesdays have always been hard, but when I had, when my daughter was at a gym in Chesterlin, I could have people help, now I'm driving an hour each way, and it's becoming impossible to get her back and forth to Avon, and that's just not.
So if Thursdays work, Jim, can you guys just readjust the schedule and just send that out via email maybe? And then, I guess, post it on the website?
Yeah, this, August 26, that's the first day of school, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Should be.
No.
We're not here, doing that, although they're here.
We'll just move them to the same week, different days.
Fourth Tuesday, uh, fourth Thursday?
Yeah. Thank you, guys, very, very much. Very much appreciate that, and so will the rest of my family, when I'm not going crazy trying to get.
November will be.
Thanks, Gary.
Well, we usually do November the week ahead of time, anyway.
It's scheduled for the 16th, not.
Yeah.
Do you, do you guys want to just agree on the dates now?
That's probably a good idea.
Let's just do that.
So, that's a good idea. So we are in July, so maybe August 26. September 23?
Uh, no, it would be September 30.
Even though we usually do the 4th?
Yeah, it's currently scheduled for the 28th.
Oh, because technically, right, because, well, that'd be the.
It doesn't really matter, like, does anybody care? Does it matter?
Well, the 23rd is the homecoming parade.
Oh.
Oh, okay, so let's do the parade.
So September 30?
Yeah. And then it would be August, or October 28? Well, we have it on the 16th of November, so what do you want to do in November?
18?
18, yep.
November 18?
Yeah.
December?
Then we'll do December 16, probably, right?
Does that work for everyone? Gosh, those are all free.
Yep.
That's so amazing, that it was that simple.
Right, we can't get, we can't get one meeting scheduled to like, have executive sessions, and we can like, change.
Thank you, I appreciate you all very, very much. Thank you. All right, do we have any other new business? All right, that takes us to public participation. Nobody here, so we can just skip that. That brings us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Finance and audit would be first. Is, I'm sorry, finance, audit?
So, motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the Treasurers, letters A through N. Can I have a second?
Just, just a quick update, we talked about at the finance committee meeting, probably because if Gary's not here, I'm just gonna let you know that we have an agenda item number B, number B, let me, to refinance some additional of the bonds for the school construction. Mike Purcell was at our meeting at the finance meeting last week, and we talked about all that, and just like the other one that we did, we were gonna move them to taxable from non-taxable, and it was, it's a pretty smart move, we're saving a lot of money in interest, and so.
You're saving money on them being, you said taxable?
Well, they're just, it's just the reissue will be a taxable issue for the people who purchase them, the investors.
So, can you just elaborate a little bit more on why that's an advantage?
Because of interest, because of the movement of interest rates right now, so they're moving some of the midterm and late issue dates, and we're gonna refinance some of those, and they pick and choose those based on the issue interest rates. I can't.
I know, it's technical, but in the end, it saves us.
It's saving, it's saving the district interest dollars in the long run, and so it's, and it's attractive to investors right now, and so it was a $23 million of bonds that will be refinanced, and we did that once before with the smaller, the smaller issue of funds that we had issued, and now this is part of the larger issue of bonds.
So.
I think the best way to look at it is like refinancing your whole point, right? The interest rates are low, there's a benefit to us to refinance the bonds at this time to save money down there.
Okay, and that's fair. Do we have a scale, or they had to be issued before we, we don't know the interest rate until they're actually issued.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't know the scale of the savings at this point?
Correct. It was in excess of a million, which is beneficial to us.
They'll work with Gary to determine which ones will actually refinance, so there was a couple that were questionable, and Gary had some reason why it would be a good idea to refinance them, so this is just to get the process started.
It probably won't happen for at least two months by the time they have to do all the issue and all the paperwork and whatever, but we had talked about that at our finance meeting, and again, Mike Purcell had come in to do a presentation on why we were gonna do that, and which ones we were gonna select, so I didn't realize I would be speaking on the topic, otherwise I would have brought different paperwork, but, yeah, so.
No worries.
So that's a good idea. I just wanted to touch upon a couple of the other things that we had talked about at the finance meeting. We talked about the contracted substitutes, item J, about increasing their rate to be more competitive, and we had agreed on that at the finance meeting, and we also talked about items K and L, about disposal of the computer and technology and network hardware through a third-party vendor who will do auction for that.
So that's everything at Leroy, it looks like?
It's, it's, it's all being housed right now at Leroy, but it's district-wide stuff, it's all, it's all old computer equipment. So there was that, and then, I believe, item N, we had, we had approved a transfer for termination benefit fund last year, and this is the annual transfer that they're gonna make for that. And that was, that was the extent of the things that we had talked about at the finance committee meeting, and other stuff is just routine, so.
What is item C, which is the education alternatives?
I think that's a special ed.
It is, I, I don't know, Jim, I just know off the top of my head that we can try to accommodate some students with special needs, that are based on their IEPs and what their, their goals and objectives are, whether or not we can meet their needs here.
Okay.
True.
And I think they said there was like five tiers of service in there, right? So there's different levels of service that they're gonna provide?
Can you call the vote?
Can you call the roll?
Call the roll, thank you.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through I. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Can you call the roll? Please, give me a second.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda, the athletic supplemental contracts as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I don't think we need to split these off any longer, Jim, just because I'm not, I'm not coaching anymore. This is the last one, they officially have, they found somebody for me, so we don't have to split them off any longer, I just want to know.
Congratulations. Give me some of your life back.
This is part of the whole, I cannot take anymore. I need to, I need to step back on a few things, so yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? Can you call the roll?
All right, Jennifer Harden.
I'll abstain still, just to be sure.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming?
Motion to approve the items listed in curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through F.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion?
I'm glad to see we've got the, for 2022 graduation already on there, that's exciting. If we decide that we're gonna, we're obviously, we're trying to do this, oh.
Roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried, sorry. Buildings and grounds.
All right, motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds, consent agenda, items A through D, as recommended by the superintendent. They have a second, please.
Second.
Very much, Mr. Korniski, any, any discussion?
I'm just gonna ask how the concrete work around the buildings is going, I've seen them out a lot.
Yeah, it's completed.
Good.
It looks good, I just happened to see how it goes. Richard Lessig is really on to what we can put down on that concrete, what we cannot. But they were even out, I thought it would be a little bit longer, but they, it would take them very long to.
There's a lot more work than I realized when I drove past, I don't believe how much is actually torn up.
I don't know, it's from, from, at least park view, I'm not as familiar with River View, just because I, I don't drive past it.
Right, see, I always.
Right, but it's, I mean, the sidewalks, I mean, there were sidewalks in the fronts and in the, on the main entrance, and, I mean, there was a ton.
Yeah, there was. So we're completed and in good shape now? Good. Anything else on buildings and grounds that you guys have discussed that we need to be updated on?
No, the, just the Gardner is, is better understood based on the last building and grounds committee meeting about Gardner. We really, when we built the buildings and selected the equipment in Gardner, we really have a long-term relationship with them, and so by having Gardner do some of the monitoring and maintenance of the, of the equipment, it is going to put our maintenance department in a better position, ultimately, it's, it is, it reduces, it puts the experts where they need to be and reduces some of the.
Sounds reasonable.
I'm sorry, I was gonna mention something at the end of the board meeting, so.
Okay.
I just realized we did take a vote on.
So with that, would you please, unless there's more discussion, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, that takes us to the Board of Education update.
Dr. Kayla, what do you have, for instance?
There was, there was a resolution on the agenda that allows our communication and marketing director to solicit sponsorships for schools for advertising. This is something that we haven't done in-house in a while. It was started, this program was started by the Gridiron Club a few years back, they approached us, they wanted to generate revenue by having the advertising, so what we decided to do is, is make a deal where they would start the program, and they would realize those funds for the first few years of the program, and then they would turn it over to the district, and the district then would, because it was already started, would continue with the program and would realize those funds for our athletic department. Nick has been working on it this year, Nick, I hate to put you on the spot, so I didn't ask you to give a quick update, but is there anything you'd like to tell the board?
No, I mean, we've just been reaching out to a lot of local businesses and community members who are interested in sponsorship, so far we're up to about 13 grand from about 10 different companies. The Gridiron Club annually brought in about eight to 10, but again, that only went to the football team, so a lot of, you know, different groups use that field, obviously, soccer, lacrosse, track. And then we're also expanding it to the fieldhouse and the varsity baseball and softball field, so the nice thing about it too is there's no cutoff date, you know, if they want to sponsor in the winter or in the spring, they can, whereas previously, you weren't sponsoring by late August, early September, you know, the program was pretty much over, so this will go year-round, pretty much.
Good.
Yeah, the great thing about it is, it's just, you know, we do the advertising, we just have to be very careful with our agreement with like health, can't bring another health system in, but other than that, it's, it's pretty much open. One other thing I wanted to mention to the board as well is that I reached out to Sheridan Local Schools, they have any problems with the replacement of their turf. They anticipated starting the season on time, but it looks like they're not. I don't know if you've seen it in the news, and reached out and told them that we would provide our fields in the gaps where we're not using them, it's not gonna disrupt any of the programs we have, and that goes all the way down to youth sponsored sports, because as the way I look at it, they're taxpayers, it is their field as well, so we're trying to find gaps where, if they need the field, they can use it. We are not interested so much in do charging them rent, but it would be at cost, say, for example, they have a football game, we have to get custodians to clean it, they're gonna be paying for that, the lights, anything related to the.
Which they'll be paying anyway at their own stadium.
Right, so.
Would we open the concession to them?
No, that's another thing, I said that if they have a game, it would be our concession, so long as we command it, we're not having anyone from the outside coming into our concession.
But we could allow our booster groups, if they so chose, to provide concessions and make money on it.
Absolutely.
That'd be nice.
So, from right now, I know Athletic Director Boris is talking to their Athletic Director, and I think they have some of the lower classmen, lower classmen of athletic activities, like freshman soccer, you know, JV soccer, possibly, that sort of thing. Football right now, I think there's discussion with, and it's, nothing is set yet, but they were talking about having their opening game against Glendale here, but nothing's, nothing's confirmed yet, but I wanted the board to know that we reached out. One of the reasons why is, you know, I would hate to have them in their position, but in the past, I don't know if the board remembers, when we had some of our buses that weren't ready for inspection or failed inspection, we needed a few buses, I, I reached out to Sheridan, Sheridan helped us out by allowing us to borrow a few of their buses for a few weeks. Also, when we were building our stadium, our track teams were practicing on their facilities, so I thought not only being a good neighbor, if we're able to help, we can have them come in and use our field. I told them I didn't want them getting too comfortable on our. We hear the buzz out there, we reach out.
I think that's the right thing to do, okay, that's good. Are we gonna, if they do end up using our stadium, are we gonna have Mr. Boris reach out to our booster groups and allow them, let them know that there's an opportunity for them to be in concessions and provide that?
Yeah, we haven't yet, we wanted to find out really where the, you know, how many events we're gonna have. But one interesting thing about this is, we, there's no reason to announce about this type of situation, so this year, we're supposed to play Sheridan at their place, right? It's all on intense purposes, say, if this is their home field too, in football, you know, technically, they'd be on the home side, they'd be on the other side, I said, no deal. We're, if that's the case, we're staying on our side, they're staying on your side. I don't want them to get into our heads.
Imagine. So the other thing I want to bring up is that, obviously, we know there's a lot going on with the masks and things like that, I know that we sent out an email to all of our families recently, just were, are standing on it, you just want to give a quick update on it as well, it's kind of, we're all getting a lot of questions right now.
A lot of, a lot of the organizations that are out there giving their recommendations, most seem to say that they recommend or highly recommend masks. The way I look at it at this point is, you have experts on public health telling us this, but they're not ordering us to do that, and for me, we're not, we're not experts on public health, so if they are saying recommend, we can easily say recommend, but we're not gonna make it mandatory. And it's, I understand it right now with my colleagues in Lake County, Goya County, I don't know any that are going to deviate from the mask optional stance, that when the start of the school time occurs, that we would, at this point, not mandate masks, but they would be available for, for students to wear them if they want. We also made available an online program as well through the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve, so parents feel very strongly about the fact that they don't want their child going into a school that doesn't have a mask mandate, that they have an option to reach out to us and apply for that, and we can get them into that program. So at this point, we don't have masks, and the only, the only thing we need to clarify is that I believe that there is a mandate on school buses, but I'm looking into that a little bit further.
Right, and I think we should, because I, my understanding is not every district is going to require masks on buses as well, so. And I, and I would advocate through, you know, to make it as optional as possible, so if, you know, if people want to wear a mask on the bus. Please do, but, but that it's not the mandatory.
I can just have seen it being such a nightmare sometimes too, like the kid comes to school with it on, some much time during the day, they lose it because they haven't had it all day, right? And it's time to get on the bus, they don't have it, then are we either supplying them? All, you know, it just seemed like, just.
There's still gonna be protocols, and as much as we can separate kids in classrooms, but, you know, we're, we're still talking in a confined area, there's not gonna be any dust shields, you know, we're gonna try to bring back at least some type of normalcy to the classroom experience, and unless things go south, obviously, we would have those discussions at the board table as well, but at this point, it's, it's gonna be mask optional.
And we're gonna still have all the anti-sanitizing stations, all those kind of things from last year.
We still have a lot left over from that year.
I'm sure we do, and for the next 10 years, yeah, still.
Yeah, what's the shelf life on that stuff?
You know, I saw, I was, I was in Home Depot this past weekend, and Sheridan, and they had these big jugs of it, they were just a quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah?
A quarter.
You remember how expensive they were about this time last year? Now they're, they're 25 cents.
Wow.
I didn't need any, but I was gonna buy it, just.
Sometimes you just feel the need, you see, they clean it up.
It's too good to you, look at that.
Right. Melissa's question is, Dr. Mock, did I see that schedules are coming out shortly too, or that it's, isn't it supposed to be in the next?
I believe next week, so summer school ends this week, and then that's what the holdup was this year, to roll over.
Still sounds early, but, yeah.
Well, we were, we were actually ready to go in June.
I know.
For the first time that I've been pushing a June schedule release, we were ready to go, and then summer school, because we had to run a full program this year, kind of throw a monkey wrench on that, so, yes, they should be coming out in the next week, week and a half.
How's summer school going?
It actually has gone really well, so I'm hoping, like I said, they're wrapping up, is it Tuesday? So Wednesday, they're wrapping up tomorrow, I don't even know what day of the week it is. They're wrapping up tomorrow, so I will have, we'll be able to talk about it at the next curriculum meeting, how many kids were credit, you know, recovered some credits and how much, you know, headway we made on that, so, but it's been pretty good, pretty, pretty proud of them. The kids that showed up got, really, the majority of them got some stuff done at the high school level, and it looks to me, I was over at River View, they were planting plants and trees, they did an island in the middle, that was one of their projects. A lot of complaining because it was hot, and they were digging, and they were sweaty and dirty, but it, it looks really good, so it's been, it's been a good run.
We, I also visited Leroy yesterday, actually walked through the building and everything else, it's loaded with a lot of things in there. Some of them still have a, quite a shelf life, we have some small chairs, a lot of them, and Melissa and I were talking that, I don't know how the board would feel about this, we would like to go in there and tag everything that we want, and once we have that tagged, we may have it removed from the building, at which point, we were going to allow, of our purchases, that most likely, it sounds like it might be the Leroy trustees, and have them tag what they want to keep, and at which point we would remove anything that's in there that we don't need. I know it's gonna be a lot more than probably a lot of us think, and in September, it's my understanding, Leroy has the community garage sale. We didn't know if it might be a, not be a bad idea to get some people over there, empty it out, or have people go through and identify what they would like to buy, and try to sell as much as we possibly can.
That's a great idea.
Instead of scrapping it, it might be a better idea to allow people from the community to purchase something if they want it.
The Ash community comes in.
Yeah, they come in, they came in, when we did, when we closed Lechmond, we advertised it in the newspaper, and they came in with trucks.
Oh, yeah.
And emptied the, like, everything, yeah.
We were, it was pre-COVID that we had talked, talked about it originally, and I said, we just go set a table up outside the door on garage sale day, set a fixed price, you know what I mean, whatever, you haul it, you take it, and we're done. Marlo and I were gonna make a day of it, but that's a whole other, a whole other conversation.
I mean, we might, we might not make a ton of money on it, but we'll make something and.
And it's gone, they're too.
It could be like crazy.
Oh, gosh, yeah. I mean, it's a great idea. I think that's a great idea.